I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah.
Cause there's some. For projects. Okay, okay, well, just if we do. And you know that, I'm sure.
Right, right, right. It, does it have to be a declaration? It does have to be a FEMA declaration, okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were taking advantage of that, if, if we could zero percent through the, through the state instead of. Okay.
Hey Natalie, on that, that i- issue, we can probably wait till, we can probably wait till next week to do an exec on that when you're here, if that's. You want to do an exec for something?
That works for me. Yep.
Well, we are, I mean, if we need to, then we, we, we can. Just, I'll just keep, we'll just keep the Zoom going, but we'll just shut up with YouTube stream, we just gotta. End this that, if we need to.
Okay, thanks.
Morning Sarah. Press release. Connington, Minnehaha Counties in South Dakota will become the first counties in the state to coordinate, conduct mandatory, court mandated alcohol monitoring. So that will be neat, that's gonna be a time saver for those folks at jail.
I know that's fake. Oh yeah.
Oh yeah.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, you're aware, yeah, we are.
Okay. All right, it is nine AM, I'm going to call this meeting of the Connington County Board of Commissioners to order, it is Tuesday, October sixth, twenty twenty. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Gable, would you lead us?
The Pledge of Allegiance is given by the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, call for public comment, we will defer this to the open part of our meeting, but individuals will have an opportunity to call in if they are not able to attend the meeting, the numbers are eight eight two six two four eight and eight eight two six two nine seven. We are streaming live on YouTube and also I would ask if you have a cell phone, if you would silence it please. If you need to take calls, if you could step out into the rotunda. Item number three, conflict of interest items, are there any for commissioners on the agenda? Right? Item number four, action to approve the October sixth, twenty twenty agenda.
So, second.
Okay, motion by Waterman, second by Gable, on favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the minutes of the September twenty ninth. Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable, any additions, corrections? Hearing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries, we'll get right into our monthly reports and we'll start with extension, that would be Jody. Should all be wearing green.
Missed my, missed my, missed that.
I love the mask, Jody.
I know. Thank you.
Is that handmade?
No, this one actually came from the National Four H Mall, so, online, so. So I could actually, I kind of ran out of time to sell some right now, so, I do have four H material, but. Oh, the last time I was here, I was ready to head off to State Fair. So we did hold State Fair and we didn't hold some of the events at State Fair because like our special foods that I usually am part of, so I actually got to go to one swine show for one, one day and help with the swine show, so it was a great opportunity to see other parts of the fair too. So we have National Four H Week this week. We sent bookmarks and coloring pages out to our schools. And the Pro Kiel Schools and PAC allowed us to put bookmarks in every bag, so. Every kid will get a Four H bookmark this week. Four H Youth just completed their two thousand nineteen twenty Four H Year by filling out their record books and award applications, so. The Four H Leaders will come tomorrow between four and six to choose award winners, I'm kind of spacing them out, gotta think of how to do that, so. They'll be spaced out in exhibit hall and judging and. And then, the Four H Recognition Event will be held with approval from South Dakota Four H. Only award winners and one parent can come with them, there will be no beverages or food provided. Well, everyone spaced out in the North Expo, so masks will be required indoors for the Four H Events. Following the SDSU guidelines that we have. Since it is a Four H Event, so we won't be kind of publicizing that as much. Because only the award winners and parents can come to that, so.
Is there any way you could stream that for other individuals who might want to watch that?
We might be able to, we'll have to figure out how to.
We can do it.
Do it, yeah.
You could use, the county has a Zoom account now, so you could, you could use that.
Or I have one through SDSU too, but just have to get some type of thing to video it with, so. Besides my computer.
Lee's really good.
Well, we, we. Webcams are pretty cheap.
Okay, what's the date on that?
Um, it's October eighteen, so. This year, during achievement days, we usually take pictures, a group picture, but this year we couldn't, so I asked every kid to send me a picture with them and their shirt that we had for this year, so I have some extras here, if you guys want to pass them around. But, so they had to send me a picture of them, it's looked, kind of looked like a Zoom room for us, so. So that's what we had to do, not everyone got their picture in there, so not every kid is represented on the photo, so. You have to place, you want to hang it up, go ahead and share it, so. SDSU Extension Conference is going to be held with NDSU in Kansas this year, so we get some different opportunities to learn from other states. And that's going to be held virtually in October. And then our National Four H Conference that would be in Boise, Idaho this year is also being held virtually. In October too, so, a lot of virtual opportunities, and I've been watching some webinars from Minnesota and other parts of the state just for some professional development along the way too.
Any questions?
Everything takes a little bit of extra thinking. To make the opportunities for the kids, so.
How is enrollment going for next year?
Well, we don't know yet, our Four H Enrollment just opened October first, they're doing some updates to our Four H online website. So they can't re-enroll till November second because of that update. And then we've had multiple people coming in to fill out paperwork for enrollments, so that's good. Just hoping everyone wants to know when Clover Bud is going to be held, I really don't know yet, because you know, schools and everyone's, the numbers are high right now, so. Just holding off until we can do it, so. Yeah, and do it safely is right, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on then to the Veterans Service Officer and we'll, Todd, you would, gave us a little. With all your information.
Morning, Todd.
Good morning. Uh, let's start off, I did get the new computer, got the wifi set up in the office, uh, still working out a few bugs from that, just. You know, you get used to one system, just takes a little while, but I am looking at getting some, I call it assure software. Basically, it's for my email. It's only twenty-five dollars for a year, it's for me to be able to send them an email which is secure. And then if they attach documents, they're able to send it back to me.
Is it encrypted then or something, or it's a whole different sort of?
Yeah, it's encrypted, so they're supposed to be able to protect the confidential aspect of the PII, the social security numbers for states. Financial stuff from that standpoint, because it's just getting, it seems to be like there's kind of a shift right now, I don't know, the doing a lot of pension claims, and I'm working with people from Ipswich to California, Redfield. Where the spouse of the veteran or the veteran live in one of the community care facilities. So it just, it's tough to be able to work that stuff back and forth, just.
Sure, so on the software, are you working with Connecting Point, do you get that?
I am, I am, yep, and I talked with Cindy a little bit about it too, so. Yeah. I think it was Julie had Connecting Point, but. The VA seems to be working back on track, I have noticed through my system, several clients who claims that have been getting delayed notification letters, just stating from the VA that, hey, we're working your case, bear with us, we're a little behind right now, so I have seen several of them coming out from that standpoint. So they're, they're trying to get back up, back online here again, so. Uh, starting one January, this is just a little tidbit, TRICARE will require an enrollment fee for veterans using it. It's twelve fifty for a single and twenty-five dollars for a family. I've had a few veterans come in, talk about this, express concern that, you know, I did twenty years in the military. Why am I having to pay for my healthcare now? Tried to explain to them that this was a congressional act, dating back to the National Defense Authorization Act of two thousand seventeen. If they have issues with it, that there's really nothing I can do from my standpoint, but talk to your congressman or talk to your local military organization to rally. But I mean, it's been out there for a while.
We need to chime in, Chair, that the, the open season or the open enrollment for that, honestly, it starts November ninth or something like that.
Ninth through December fourteenth.
So, they don't, they don't want to miss it, they want to keep the TRICARE, veterans don't want to miss it.
Yep, they have to go in and enroll and get the automated payment set up, because if they don't have that done by that, they could lose their TRICARE come one January. Yep. So that doesn't affect all the veterans, just the ones on TRICARE. This year's selection for the Connington County Veteran of the Year was Courtney Livingston from the Marine Corps League. He was already recognized, they got the certificate and stuff here middle part of September at the fire station. When they also recognized one of the firemen up there. I did find out that I was, in the past, the county had purchased the, the trophy. And the Marine Corps is planning to have a ball, they usually have one in November, and that's when we're looking at presenting that to him at that event there. So. We currently have about fifty plus claims in retrospect, in one form or fashion. It's, like I said again, pensions, I've probably got six of them that I'm working. And they are interesting, they are a lot of data, so. Just seems like there's been an uptick in that. I, I do think though, when you look at it, once people, you know, if a veteran is qualified for that, it's a it's a benefit that's out there that a lot of people are maybe unaware of from the pension standpoint. Everybody thinks of the VA and they think of compensation, but pension is a, is an option out there, people are in struggling a little financially from that standpoint, but there's some eligibility requirements with that, so. We submitted two more packets for drivers, so we should be, I believe, I think it's seven is our potential volunteer drivers list, so again, thanks JP for getting the ball rolling on that one. Yeah, that's been a pretty good success story there. We made three trips in September, we have currently three scheduled for October. Seabock, they had a full clinic on the twenty-fourth September, they have another one coming up on the thirtieth of October from zero eight to four thirty. Basically, I went to the one on the twenty-fourth, you drive up, stick your arm out the door. Ask you a couple of questions, you get your shot and away you go, so that was a good deal there. Future, attend to See of Goodwill on thirty October, also I got a call from Eric Schultz at LATI. He runs a veterans group there, they got anywhere, he said right around a hundred and twenty veterans, give or take. And we're trying to try to do a meet and greet last part of October, first part of, first part of November. Just kind of be there if they have questions about benefits or whatnot from the VA standpoint, veterans. I'm still working to complete my VBMS training, that's that database that I was talking about last month, I had a couple of links sent to me to get onto the line there. I think I finally have it figured out now, but still a little behind process, I wanted to have that done by September, so. October will be my new goal on that. I also talked to Connecting Point when they set up my computer, they said that they would be able to scrub or reset up that computer for my front area there at no cost now that we have that program working with Connecting Point. Lastly, DAV Vehicle, the application is not out yet. I am on the list at the DAV in Sioux Falls to get it sent to me as soon as it's published. Just a little note there, you know, we currently have a hundred and sixty-two. If we don't go after it this year and we wait until next year, we'd be roughly, you know, on an average of a hundred and eighty-one thousand miles on it, so. I'm, I'm kind of thinking that we prob- probably want to try to jump on that, we did put it in the budget, so I have it there. So again, more to come on that, I just thought I'd break you where we were at with that right now.
There's really nothing more that we can do.
And not until the application comes out.
Does that, does that? If we don't get it this year and we apply for it, do we get moved up on the list for next year?
You know, I, I don't know if that necessarily works that way. From when I talked with Gene Murphy down in Sioux Falls at the DAV, host one there. He seemed to be fairly confident that if we apply that we would probably get this Colorado grant through the DAV, which pays the other half of it. You know, if we're already saying that we have our mouth budgeted for it. Because we wouldn't actually pay for it until, from what I understand, until March of next year. We do the order, you get approved, so that, there was another, when I talked to him about it the other day, they said there was one other organization that was looking at getting one, so. Till I really see the app and I'm, it's really new to me from the standpoint, but. And our vehicle is, is actually in still pretty good shape, you know, from that standpoint, we could probably get by if we had to again, so. Any other questions or concerns?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. All right, next we'll do welfare. Sarah. Morning, Sarah. I also have a sheet, I'm just going to go over some of the NACO stuff as well. Um, can you guys hear me, okay? Yep.
What? Okay.
I do it to my kids all the time. So just a couple of things with, with the NACO and the Health Steering Committee, some of the priorities that we had and some wins. We did have where CMS withdrew their Medicaid financing regulation. And this would have created a lot of burdensome to our state as far as the Medicaid financial structure. One of the things that was in there that was significant was that CMS wanted to go to a block structure. And that was about two years ago, but when we talked about that, what would have happened, it would have capped off that level at that time, your state would have received for Medicaid. And we brought up the idea, well, what if you have a pandemic for eight, maybe we curse that, but, I mean, really not thinking that would happen. But here, here it did, and, and so luckily, that brought that to tension, is that didn't happen, so what would have happened is when Medicaid dollars would have capped where you were at, at that level at that time, where now is, as you get an increase in expenses. The federal government is reimbursing more, so this was a, is a significant win on that MFR rule, because basically if Medicaid's not covering, that comes down to us as the county to, to cover. Another significance was the National Suicide Hotline. Number has been passed, it's going to be the number nine eight eight, we did shoot for them to use two on one. But they had that in, in mind, so that will, that's for mental health crises and suicide prevention, so that passed earlier this year. We knew about it last year, we talked about that coming through, we just glad to see that go through, so that'll be another resource on that. And then we had several mental health bills that passed, we made significant process, progress in that, twenty-six health bill passed the Health, Energy and Commerce Committee. I gave you just a quick highlight of a couple. On the sheet.
Do you have extras of this, sir?
I do.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I wasn't sitting here.
So, a lot of the bills included legislation to expand access to mental health services to combat the opioid epidemic. Also re- reauthorize key public health programs, improve Medicare enrollment. Streamline public health data sharing. And to facilitate access to marijuana for research. And the reason that's important is because we have so many states and even South Dakota is one of them that's wanting to use medical marijuana, but what we don't know because of the tier that it's considered as a drug, is it effective? And what levels is it effective? There's been research that it could be effective as a management of pain and not be as addictive as opioids, but when you can't research it, you can't find out, is it? And what are the, the, the side effects and what dosage and how to do that, so. I know that it can be controversial about marijuana, but researching it is going to be important to know what the drawbacks, what the negatives, what dosage is maybe would work, is it even a possibility? So, there's just a list of some of the bills there that will go now. For just kind of a summary, what I gave you is, basically what these bills do is it reduce disparities. Especially amongst the impoverished in the Native American population. It also encourages early intervention, it increases training protocol systems to identify behavioral health issues and act services for prevention and treatment in our schools and in the ERs, and it provides grants, funding to go with that, to help promote that. It reduces cyclical violence, so through violence prevention programs, reduce re-injury and reincarnation, reincarceration. So we know that anytime we can get ahead of the game and reduce these things earlier, we're going to have a better, better economic system because we have a better social system. And it's also increasing family support system, services for mental health and substance use, so more treating not just the individual, but the whole family.
So these, these are all out of committee in the House, not, and basically, that's the status of, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But if you've ever worked with legislation after. It's pretty significant. And a lot of them have bipartisan support, so it's pretty optimistic, right, it's lined up right now.
Just to ask another question, Joe, and don't, I'm not looking for a long answer, but is there any discussion about the when they detain somebody in the jail and they're still not, they're not proven guilty yet, so all the benefits go away, is that? That's a NACO position to.
It's inmate, inmate exclusion, Medicaid exclusion. Yes, there is, and actually they have a research team on that to take a look at that and how that impacts them, so there's actually public policy analysts, they've developed a research team to, to look at that, they'll bring that forward.
Who's research team?
NACO has a team, and there's also another team, I forget who the organization was, but the Congress has asked them to, to put that together. In addition, that will actually look at bail. The, the bail price, you know how you said bail for poverty and stuff for that, so. Yes, that's significant as well. Okay. Oh, and I'm sorry, next page was a convention highlights. The, one of the things that we talked about, send your back page on our committee is the revision of twenty-eight thirteen, which is the Care for Statute. Basically, the main, main revision is for the medical indemnity side. And basically the feedback, is there a need for the appeal procedures shorted up, the current process is not consistent on the appeal procedures, even judges and state attorneys can't have disagreement. And also there's a disagreement on who carries the proof of burden, is it the hospital county, county that a patient is indemnity? So, I was on that committee, they asked me to kind of move it forward again, so the board had a while ago, said that was okay, kind of just split it out. And they've asked to kind of revise that. Union Gospel Mission, Eric Weber discussed about people, they help people with trauma, finding their identity, it's a homeless, it's a homeless shelter down in Sioux Falls. They create a team to help people work a program, and he stressed that several times, that it takes a team, and he kept showing us this card of about fifteen different agencies, you know, working with one person. He says that the heavy lift up front, but he also says was long run cost not to help. It, multiple agencies required, and he just really, really stressed that. It's just not one agency, it just requires a team. And some of the things, and these are things I could all agree with that we find as well, is identify the, we have to help that person identify what the root is, they really aren't able to sometimes. And also what is the barrier? And the most important thing is key is build that relationship, we need to build that relationship to understand what they need. A lot of times that homeless individual is not going to necessarily be able to communicate their needs. And also they found that they can help about fifteen percent, so. Those are the chronic homeless or individuals, and that's people with chronic behavioral health and all that, and that's kind of what we found is, is all a sum or a number, so it's pretty good discussion. Presentation. Then Mike Moore from Beetle County, he talked about county mental health responsibilities, basically within voluntary mental health. And he covered involuntary substance use medals. I didn't leave a lot, if you want the slides, I can sure share with you on the voluntary mental health, I do look over any that get sent from Avera, just to, I'm pretty proficient with those laws and knowing when they meet criteria, when they not. But something he brought up that I think is something worth noting is looking at consideration of alcohol and drug committals, so the alcohol process is slower, the person doesn't have to be held. It is a more complicated process. But if, if the use of alcohol and drug is the underlying issue, it's a different process that you can use to come back to. And there is a different responsibility for the county, we're not as involved in that process, so. I know I've heard a lot of said even with the stepping up initiative, that drug and alcohol is the underlying issue, so this is something to maybe consider and look at, why are we doing involuntary mental hold, should it be, should we be looking at the process of alcohol, drug, no? So the other was the link in Sioux Falls, it's, it's just the Sioux Falls Empire Triage Center. That will be opening up, they hope this, beginning of this year. They have four partnerships, one with Minnehaha County, City Sioux Falls, Sanford and Bear Health. It's a mid-level alternative to people who are experiencing mental illness or addiction for non-violent. It's going to be kind of a first point of contact for those in the community who need and are seeking mental healthcare or addiction counseling. Their job is to basically, what the title is, identify needs quickly as possible and leak to resources already they have within the community. What stresses, unless you look at the individual, you really don't understand the scope of the impact of utilization of various resources. This program isn't intended to duplicate services, but make sure people get connected to the right links that are already there. The challenge, they said, when they had, starting this up, it was like trying to control an octopus, there was many appendages. And so what they recognized is the need to, a project manager to get to the next level, and that was their solution, is they then turned around and formed a nonprofit. And that's where Steve Link was, was then hired to be the, the manager, and each entity had to give up some control, they hired the program manager. But the benefit is, and, and because a lot of people that are doing this all the time, always have a full-time job and are already overly busy, so having someone that can oversee those logistics really helped to bring the adequate time for the heavy lift to get to the next level. In the future, they want to determine how many holds per capita. Need a planning board that can look into this further, and so they want to look at, you know, maybe there's a certain location, maybe we're more holds or things are taking place, why is that? And reasons for that, and can they, can they address that, so that was the convention. Highlights. Oh, we did update our bylaws for the Welfare Association as well, so we had our business meeting and did that, had been working on that the last year. So then, on our August statistics. A couple of things from last week, last meeting, the hotel room, just to let you guys know, at this time, both the, the people that were residency are current inmates right now, Connington Detention Center. Individual that went back to Rapid City either didn't go back or whatever, he's, he's back, he is in our jail. It followed up, there is no insurance for the hotel, and the county of residency said, no, there's nothing that they would be willing to, to cover for cost. Just to let you know, when we had homeless individuals since this, about three weeks later, the hotel room's still not been fixed. They've not looked at, they said it takes money, and so what, I contacted Tom Burns and he just said we have to base the check until that gets fixed, so the snuff payment won't be being sent to them, because we don't have access to, to the room or another room in replace, so. Also, this, this is a development that happened pretty quickly, is South Dakota Housing Development Authority has asked the county to help distribute the funds. The state of South Dakota has allocated ten million dollars in the CARES Act. The state of South Dakota has allocated ten million dollars in the CARES Act funding. It got approved on yesterday to help with rents, mortgages, and utilities. And they're asking Cottontown County to help distribute the funds. It will also be in conjunction with cap offices. Next anticipated date is October fifteenth for it to start. We have till, the state has till December thirty-first to spend these dollars. And, and it's really when we actually were asking, we're asking for two to four million, we received ten million. But this will help with mortgages, it'll help with mortgage insurances. The utilities, we cannot pay for municipal utilities because we can't utilize it for government. So, it'll be like the Cottontown Clark Northwestern Mutual, or Northwestern Power. And it cannot pay for taxes, it can't pay for any government. There is going to be a system that's. But mortgage insurance, so there is going to be a system that's going to be in place. And basically, we just can just kind of, it's, it's pretty, actually, I'm kind of jealous feeling over the system that they're purchasing to be able to, to get these people through. But we saw a gap in people that are sixty-five and over, that when COVID hit, that they were working part-time to supplement their income. Those jobs, you know, they were the first ones to, to go, to get let go, but they don't qualify for unemployment because they're over sixty-five. So, they have a decrease, so we saw a lot of need, but they didn't qualify necessarily for other services. And so, this will fill in, it's a higher income gap than what we do, it's about a hundred and fifteen percent AMI is what they're going to be looking at, it has to be COVID-related, but this is going to help some of those individuals that, that whether they had extra medical, extra childcare expenses, maybe didn't receive the unemployment of different levels, business owners, to be able to help with those mortgages. But it's going to be a pretty fast fly, flyby. And I remember when we had the stimulus funds, when we had the recession, with, they were called RF funds. We had helped ICAP run those through, and we actually had, there was a few dollars in a longer time, so. But this will help community members, it'll be their rules. And we will not have the money, we don't touch the money as the county, the checks are written by the South Dakota Housing Authority, so.
I was just gonna, so, so your role in that was, you're, you're still going to be taking these clients in and processing their claims and doing all that stuff?
Yeah, through the system, yeah, through the system, yeah, making sure that we can scan our stuff and, and upload it, and making sure that they meet the prequalification. What's really neat about this system is it tracks it, and then actually contacts the landlord themselves. A lot of times, we're having to do that, and it tells them what they need to bring in to that system as well. So, then we just kind of help facilitate, it's a pretty flip process. Um, it looks, I mean, the program that they're, they're getting from is out of California. And then two-one-one is going to oversee that part of it, and then, yeah. So, the two-one-one as statewide could not have come at a better time as, as a statewide, so.
So, if the individual would like to start this process, what do they do?
We're still waiting to find that out, so we have a call on Thursday for sure, and we expect it on the fifteenth. But at this time, you know, I would say give our office a call, ICAP office a call, or call two-one-one, you'll know more details at that time, so.
It's going to be a quick, quick, because all that fun, all those funds have to be dispensed by the end of the year.
Basically, we're building the blame model. I'm just, yeah, so it, but I think this will really help our community, it'll help the revenues too, because that's, they can get caught up on their rent. We have a list of people, so I know we can go back and say, okay, here's some funding. Okay, so, August, we had forty-eight clients. We had six for utilities, eight hours was spent in that. Right now, what we were doing with that in August is getting the energy assistance application started. We worked with energy assistance to say, and the utility company that they would hold off, we could submit the applications like starting September fifteenth. So, we've been working with them to help individuals, but we couldn't submit prior to that. Housing, we had eleven, we spent thirty-six hours on that. A lot of that, that we've had to do with that is helping people figure out budgets. Basically, what happened is by thirty-first, when that extra income fell, and they didn't save, those who didn't save and stuff were in trouble. So, they were over our income, they had what we call a secondary poverty, not that they had lack of income, they just maybe misspent. And so, what we did is we helped them set up budget and set up agreements with their landlords to try to work those payments off. Was, was a bulk of what we did, and some people are just having change of situations, so we help them get into those income-based housing. We had four economic assistance, that was two hours, basically helping people navigate the DSS. And if they have to go online, we offer services, help them with that. We had one ESD client, and that was five and a half hours. Four burials, mostly two were referred, one was a veterans service officer who we were able to connect to benefits through that way, and that covered the cost. Another individual was somebody that was, had prior pass, and Janine wanted us to go back and pay for that, and we weren't able to do that, so. One, one just represented the cost of opening and closing of the grave that we had not gotten the bill, so had not gotten paid, paid to that. So, that was minimal, four and a half hours. And we had five homeless, that was fifteen hours, and then seventeen medical, and that was thirty-four hours on that. The next graph is just the percentages. I did look back at the last graph mine, and as far as I can tell, it looked accurate, so if I'm missing something, let me know. As far as, we didn't have a lot of cost avoidance in August, because a lot of people we're working with would not qualify income for counties. So, we don't, it's not necessarily a cost avoidance, but we still provide help to them, so on that, we did have some expenses go out for the housing piece, but pretty minimal. Then the next graph is the referral to other agencies. Again, we didn't have a ton of referrals, so I can break that down to your pie graph on the referrals. We provided just a lot of case management. So, if we do the breakdown on the pie graph, the energy assistance, there was three. Like I said, we're kind of holding on to those, so we didn't count those, so we get those, but they won't get counted probably because we submitted in September. We get Salvation Army was one, DSS was four, ICAP two, Beacon Center one, other was one. And I'd have to go look up to see what the other was, the details on that, I'm not for sure. Any questions?
What were that hotel, where are we sitting with that? We need to, need to do something to get that puppy fixed up, but it sounds like you've exhausted all the other possibilities, or what, what are your thoughts?
Well, I know, kind of like, the, the consensus I thought was if you guys did want to wait to see how they get charged and have the court fill it, the courts reimburse, but, but here now, we're without a, a room until there's some funding. So, I mean, if the board would want to consider paying that and then having the, the individuals charged and required to pay the county, I would, I would be in favor of that if the board would consider that. But I think I do agree, though, we also need a better breakdown of some of the costs as far as like, is this what you replaced? Did you have to hire somebody else for, for some of that stuff? I wouldn't, I wouldn't clean it, I would have to hire out, and what was the cost of that? And also, a lot of times, what we did in the past is basically, we had three weeks where it sat empty, where we didn't have any calls. Of course, they all come at the same time, but then we couldn't access it. But the, the money that we put towards that, we're still paying for a lot of times offsets the cost, obviously, in this situation it didn't. So, I do think we would want to negotiate some of those, some of that cost and say, well, there was three weeks, cannot be used towards some of the later.
That ballpark number was fifteen hundred, right?
Yes.
I think it probably would need to be put on the agenda before we would make a decision on something like that.
Well, I would say let's put it on the agenda for next week, and let's address it. So, that, you know, if we want to do something, do it, if we don't, we don't, all that. Get it out on the floor, get it out on the table, and talk it over.
How necessary is it that we have a room, actually? Like going forward, is that something that we still want to do, to have a room for any individuals?
We see the need, I see the need, I mean, a lot of times, what'll happen, so we've had situations, so even like when we had the, the different homeless individuals, this last couple of times, luckily, it's still warm. We call hotels, and there's no openings. So, I mean, having that space reserved is important, especially when you're going into the winter months. It's very affordable versus when you're paying the, the per night rate, if you do even get a hotel. It does take, what we're seeing a transition, we don't utilize it if we have other resources. You know, it's a last option, but it definitely gives us time to be able to help that individual address some, some barriers. What we're also seeing, what we used to be able to do is we could call up a couple landlords, and they'd have openings. And we could get a person in right away, and that's, that's ideal, if you can get first help with first month rents. But we don't have that accessibility because the departments aren't, aren't as open. So, it, it really, in the long term, it gives us the ability to house somebody, especially during the winter months. It gives us the ability to, to work that case management, to get into that permanent housing, so it, it's.
Is this something that if we're going to, to do this in the future, is it something that we need to have some sort of a contract with the person whoever's renting the room that, you know, you know, I, I don't know.
Well, the thing is, if they don't have any money, then.
That's the issue.
So, we do have a contract, we do have a contract with, with the guest house, and it does state that damages are not responsible in the county. So, if we're, we, we don't have to pay, but when we do, we're going above and beyond good faith. This was a situation that was above and beyond normal circumstances that we've ever seen. And so, you know, it, it does allow us that ability to do that. I am looking also to see, there are grants out there that sometimes help pay for damages, but not because we have the contract. So, trying to find, is there a resource out there that if this happens, there'd be some constant compensation to the owner?
Part of this problem was the fact that they weren't being looked after. Basically, like, you know, they used to go in and do housekeeping, they're not doing that. So, I don't know during this time, if they're not going to be doing that and kind of keeping control of what's going on there. I don't know that we want to subject ourselves to that until they're up and, and running normally the way they used to. Because otherwise, nobody's watching them, and we could run in the same situation. If they're truly homeless, they can go through ICAP as well. That's another resource.
Right, but I don't know that ICAP has a place to put them, I mean, like this, these individuals, we refer them to, a lot of times, we're referring ICAP. What are they supposed to do so they get trapped?
That kind of leads to another question, what are the other homeless, you know, resources in the community besides this room, so, I mean?
Another question, are these individuals typically residents of our county, or are they transients that are just coming through?
This would be the first time we had someone that was a trans, so they, I would say typically, they, they are typically residents of our county.
I guess my question would be, how many times have we used this room or other rooms like this? And how many times in the past have we had a vandalism issue?
We had, so, the whole time we were at the palace, we had that for what, a year or two? I'd have to double check and get you accurate numbers, I'm off the top of my head, but we, we had that room for a couple of years, a room there, and nothing significant that we came up. We did have prior, the prior owners of the guest house, they had a situation where I think it was either food or bedbugs that the individuals brought in, they weren't supposed to bring pets, pets, but we did cover the cost. The county covered the costs of that, and I think it was like two hundred dollars for, for that to prevent the spread of the infestation. So, over, I want to say three, four years, we've had, or we've had a room and have not, you know, the, the cost was two hundred that we haven't recovered.
You said that the, these parties responsible for this are incarcerated in our jail currently. Is restitution being sought?
Yes.
Because they've both been charged with intentional damage to property.
Yes.
As a result of this.
I'll double check.
Restitution is being sought, likelihood of getting it's probably not real high, but if the, now, I think the, the county, and we can put this on the agenda for next week to take action, but, you know, we got a business owner that's not being able to use part of their business because of the damage, so. I think it's incumbent upon us to, to get that fixed, so that we can get that room back operational for the business owner. And I think the sooner we can do that, the better, but as long as restitution's being ordered in the case, I mean, this might just be one we have to swallow and move on, learn our lesson, but it's tough.
This is not on the table for discussion today, so let's.
We'll just get it on. I will be gone next Tuesday, I can do it in two weeks, so do you want to, or do you just want?
You could zoom it to, if you're available to do.
Let's get it on the agenda, so we can get it taken care of.
I know we're not discussing it anymore, but you said as soon as possible, I know, if we say, okay, we're going to do something. Working with contractors right now, they're six weeks out, I mean, it's terrible, you know? But if we're going to do it, it's probably will get done by maybe Thanksgiving or February.
I also would like on the, you know, whether we're going to continue doing this, having, offering this.
What's, what do you want from me?
Just grab it to the edge of the packet, probably say.
Do you want pictures?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, item number seven, action to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-seven, adopting the five-year highway and bridge improvement plan.
Good morning. This is, we supply the information, and Todd Case at First District puts it all together for us. And that helps with our pretty, pretty preliminary engineering grants and stuff for our bridges, so we can get assistance for ourselves.
All right, and we, this was presented to us a few weeks back, and then we just had to wait for the timeframe. Motion by Gable, second by Waterman, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oh, is that motion carries? All right, item number eight, action to authorize the chair to sign a contract with Culver Installation Projects.
This is on our County Road Seventeen between Pelican and Goose Lake. Hopefully, the contractor will be able to start on that next week to install the culverts.
This is, which one are we doing, the culverts?
Second.
All right, so motion by Johnson, second by Gable, any other discussion?
Yes, is this, any part of this, because in Polk Township, we have some culverts who are putting in, they're covered by FEMA. Is any of this covered by FEMA?
No, it's not a disaster declaration, so we are not able to do any, any of that.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oh, is that motion carries? Item number nine, action to authorize the chair to sign a contract for the Riprap Project.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen, Rick, would you like to say anything on this?
This, this, the three projects that we, we built up two of them this year, one of them last year. One is south of Pinkertown on County Road Twenty-three, one is on ten-one, three miles north of Henry, that the contractor is currently, he's already started on it, try and get that done. And then the other one is on County Road Eight-One-A, six miles north of Henry and back to the west, close to the county line. We had to build these spots up because they went underwater again this spring, so. We built them all up, except for the one south of Pinkertown, at least four feet out of the water. So, hopefully, we don't have any snow. And it'll last us forever, so.
On that one, south of Pinkertown, is that a heavily trafficked road? Is there individuals that live down there?
Yeah, there's, there's quite a bit of traffic on that road.
Well, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oh, is that motion carries also?
Thank you, Rick.
All right, I think that takes care of what we need you for, thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
All right, item number ten, note that the county office will be closed Monday, October twelve, twenty twenty. Cindy, you want to elaborate on that at all?
That is one of the.
Um, that is one of the holidays noted in our personnel policy, Native Americans Day is celebrated in South Dakota on that Monday in October, and all county offices and state offices will be closed.
All right, so with that, then Monday, the offices will be closed, the courthouse. Um, item number eleven, discussion, possible action to enact a ban on open burning. I have had, been in discussions with Jamie this morning, he's checked with, um, several of the fire departments in Watertown and neighboring communities. He said, we're still okay unless we see significant wind in the next week. So, um, I guess for this week, we will just leave it on the agenda for next week and just monitor it and see what happens, so.
There is a red flag warning issue today, so starting at noon.
So hopefully, people will take that as advisement, maybe not to do any burning today, but. All right, item number twelve, action to approve claims for payment.
Nothing today.
All right, um, number thirteen, action, possible discussion on COVID nineteen practices, procedures, policy. Did we have anything?
Anything, Natalie?
All right, item number fourteen, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
None today.
Number fifteen, action to approve personnel changes. Did you have something, Commissioner Gable?
No, I was just. Wow.
I actually have, uh, four personnel changes, one of them did not get into your packets. Um, first one is Debbie Melville, she is the accounts payable clerk in the auditor's office. She is doing anniversary step increase to step fourteen, twenty sixty-nine an hour. This puts her at the top of the scale right now, so she will have no more step increases, um, that's, we're at the top of that, fourteen is our top step. Uh, Jennifer Matac is a correctional officer, she's also going to step fourteen, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two an hour, that is her anniversary step increase. Maria Escamilla is a corrections sergeant, she's do a step increase to step twelve, twenty-four ninety-one per hour. Kyle Lewis is a correctional officer, do a step increase to step four, twenty dollars an hour.
So moved.
By, uh, Van Duzen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye. Oh, that motion carries, I don't see any travel requests.
None.
Any public notices that anyone can?
We can do dinner this Friday and, uh, a GOP meeting on Wednesday, so.
Might be a form of commissioner that those two.
Those are this week?
Yes. Yep, tomorrow and then Friday. All right, um, any old business? How about new business?
Cindy, I had a, a chance to, uh, speak with, well, I don't know, is this, maybe this is open, I'm not sure. Talking about Cares Funding.
Okay.
Um, speaking with Representative Bartles this morning for a little bit on the Cares Funding, of course, he got that five hundred million allocated, uh, yesterday in the special session, but, um, how is the county doing with the Cares Funding as far as salaries and?
Where everything I've submitted, everything I've had the opportunity to submit, I'm, I've got three things going right now. I've got tax, election and Cares Act, but everything I have submitted has been approved, so um, yesterday I submitted the correctional officer salaries for March and April, um, plus the computer equipment for the emergency management office to allow them to work remotely if need be, um, so that's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that will get reimbursed.
Is it looking like we're going to be able to spend?
We're gonna have, we're gonna, I'm, I'm pretty sure we'll have over a million dollars worth. I don't know if we'll get to our one point eight, because there's a, there's a specific list of, of what you can, um, apply. I actually had to argue a little bit to get the, um, the laptops for the emergency management office approved. Um, initially, they didn't want to, but after some conversations back and forth, and, I mean, that's a two-person office. If one of them becomes ill, they could both become ill. We need people to continue to run that office. So if they have to do it from home, they're gonna need the equipment. Um, and I did, uh, did get a notice that that has been authorized, so.
Where, where do those requests go and who, who okay's them?
Um, they go, there's an independent audit team, and, um, there's a team through the state of South Dakota. I have to, it's a very time-consuming process. I have to do a spreadsheet with everybody's salaries. I have to do some hand calculations, because, um, Cottington County does pre-tax for certain things that qualify, such as health insurance, dental insurance, so I have to hand calculate out the social security for that employee's, uh, monthly wage, and it's, it's very time-consuming, like I said, um, yesterday I did manage to get, um, Aprils for the correctional officers, so I have May, June, July, August and September for the correctional officers to yet submit, and I am caught up with the sheriff's salaries with the exception of September, so um, as time permits, I'm getting everything submitted. I do know, um, yeah, everything I submitted so far has been approved, so our initial payment that we got was like over five hundred and fifty thousand, and then another hundred and sixty thousand with the stuff from yesterday, so.
I was just wondering if we're still on track with, with the numbers that's been allocated.
I expect we'll get over a million, I don't know if we'll get to one point eight. Most of our PPE and, I mean, I'm, I'm submitting those too, but they're just not as high the costs as, um, as the salaries are. That's definitely what First District is encouraging us to do is go for the things we know that are gonna get reimbursed, and like I said, there's, you go to that website, there's a specific.
Yeah.
They're pretty specific on what you can apply for, so.
Do you need more help, or would they get in the way?
Help with.
Just preparing these.
This stuff is, this is something I have to do, or my office has.
That's what I said, or will they get?
Yeah, yeah, this is, yeah, this is something you have to have a knowledge of who you're applying, I mean, who these employees are, what kind of benefits they have, so. That's kind of something that does have to be handled, it's just that everything is hitting at once, we are getting help with the election stuff. Um, uh, we had forty-two hundred dollars, forty-two hundred ballots applied for, and just about twenty-eight hundred returned voted, so. And those are going up daily, but, yeah, Troy's, in response to your question, we are getting, we are using some of the funds, so.
How's your postal budget holding out?
Uh, okay, it's not as bad as it was in the primary. Um, voters now realize that those are not postage-free envelopes, that they're, some, some still are coming back with insufficient postage, but for the most part, the correct postage. I think we spent maybe a hundred dollars of the five hundred that we put on account, so.
That's much lower.
That's much lower than.
Dropped off.
Yeah, and the drop box at the back door of the courthouse is being utilized greatly. And people are walking their ballots up to us also, so, kind of got off track on Troy's question, but we are.
I was just wondering how, how are, how it's doing, if we're gonna be able to utilize all of it.
You have to provide a lot of documentation for these auditors. First, they go.
The state's gonna be audited.
They go, right, they go through one, I don't know if it goes to the state first or the independent auditors first, but they both look at it. And then you get either authorized or, uh, what's the word they're using? Is it rejected? It comes back to you and they'll tell you what they, what you need to provide, so. Like I said, since I've gotten the first two of the correctional officers approved, now I know what they need. It's just finding the time to get the spreadsheets in, so.
I was gonna say, you're doing very well, because at conference, there was a lot of frustration with some of the, you know, individuals of trying to do that process. It's very.
Even getting registered was a process. They're very, very particular on the paperwork we submit, so.
So thank you, you sound like you've got it figured out.
The state's been, uh, tracking that very closely, making sure that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, because they will be audited on that.
They're required to, we're gonna be audited on it. We haven't had to have a federal audit for a number of years, but we will be in for one the next go-round, so.
This has to be submitted and paid for by the end of the year.
They're telling us December thirtieth, so it's barely gonna give me time to get December payroll submitted, but I will make every effort to get because our December payroll will be on the twenty-second of December, so I should have my numbers in place to submit before the twenty-ninth.
The governor was on radio this morning, I heard her say that the money has to be spent.
Yep.
It's not, it's not prorated or anything like that, it has to be spent.
It has to be.
So that December payroll, that's a little bit tough, it has to be submitted by December thirtieth, but it has to be spent.
And it will be spent, I mean, our, our money will be distributed on the twenty-second of December, it's just getting the report um, submitted, so, um, we're working on it. Thank you for that.
Bad problem to have.
Right.
Yeah. Train election season.
Any other things for the open?
Oh, just one, one thing, I'm sure just FYI, there's a JDAI meeting today, it's by Zoom, so I'll be attending that with judgments. So, and I think this, this sheriff usually attends that, but it's all virtual today. JDAI is Juvenile Potential Alternative Initiative, in case anybody's wondering.
All right.
I should mention, the people working with the Cares Act funding that we're working on are very helpful. They're, they're very easy to approach, I've talked to them on the phone, I've had emails with them, so they are very helpful. They do not want to to turn anybody down, they just want to make sure everything's in place, so.
Well, I suppose, if they know they're gonna be audited, there has to be certain documentation.
They're very congenial to work with, so I haven't had any problems there.
They just tell you exactly what you need.
Yep, yes, we work back and forth, and like I said, everything's been approved to date, so. Including the cleaning of the highway department when we had that event out there last spring, when they brought in, um, Service Master. So it was, okay, yeah, so that, we got reimbursed for that too.
Good.
All righty, well, anything else? Uh, we have a need to go into executives.
What's the issue, I have to wait. But, but if we, if you have any other issues that we need to do, I can cover it.
Well, I think we have one personnel thing that we need to discuss, um, I don't know, Natalie, she wants to do what you were talking about.
Yeah, it's just a union contract.
So we'll do, uh, personnel and then contractual matters. It should be pretty short, I would think.
Yes.
And no, nothing will happen afterwards, so there'll be no actions, actions taken. So, look for a motion to go into executive.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Gable, second by Van Duzen, all in favor, say aye.
Yeah, I'll just stop the YouTube stream, that way it's easier.
Yep, sounds good.